I'll go ahead and call a meeting to order and ask that City Administrator Craig Rossett, the leadest senior pledger of the department.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the rule of which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father God, we humbly come to you this evening and just pray that you're with us as we make decisions on behalf of our community, Lord. We pray that we glorify you in every success that this city has, Lord, and we pray that you continue to be with us. In Jesus's name, amen.
Before the citizen comments, I seek a motion for approval of tonight's agenda.
I approve the motion. Will we approve the agenda?
I approve the motion. Seconds. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Citizen comments. And I'll just say, too, that you're coming forward, you're fine. When, at this point, we'll listen to the comments tonight, and as always, if you would like to ask questions or enter this dialogue with us, you can make an appointment with Craig or myself after the meeting or sometime next week. But this is just our opportunity to listen to the public, and so we will let you speak and listen. So if you'll state your name and sign in, it's kind of what's my line. For those of you that know what's my line. It's an old, old TV show. Thank you. Go ahead.
My name is Taylor Troll, and I am a community member, wife, mother, and a nurse with functional medicine experience. When I started learning about the dangers of chemical exposure being carcinogenic or cancer-causing, I called the City of Goddard in summer of 2023 and asked about the chemicals used in the fog trucks and was assured that malathion, in their words, was non-toxic and that the fogger was broken anyway, so I didn't need to worry. They said that malathion only lasted in the air for 30 minutes, and that's why they spray at night, but I have concern with it falling on the ground when we have well water for our sprinkler system. Fast forward to this year, and the foggers have been out, and my two-year-old son Lev was recently diagnosed with leukemia, and his quality of life has changed forever. From the peer-reviewed research I've done on medical research databases, malathion, the chemical we use in these trucks, is linked to B-cell lymphocytic damage, and that's the exact type of cancer that Lev has. Obviously, correlation doesn't equal causation, and I don't know for a fact that malathion is why Lev got cancer, but it makes me suspicious. Do we, as a community, really want to be risking the safety of its citizens for viruses that probably have never affected our community at all through mosquitoes, but now the consequences of malathion have affected a two-year-old in our community? The reasoning behind using malathion is to prevent mosquito-borne illnesses and control the mosquito population, and I'd like to ask the council how many confirmed cases of mosquito-borne illnesses affect Goddard. Malathion is banned in Europe except for the use in greenhouses. Multiple health organizations recognize its ability to cause cancer. A lot of comments from citizens on the Goddard Facebook page is, well, it's worth the risk to control the mosquito population. But is it? Because the risk is looking you in the face. It's my two-year-old son with cancer. And if people are okay with the risk, let them pay for a service with their own money to spray their own yards and take the risk for their own family. But please don't make the decision for my family to spray pesticides in the air when I do everything I can to prevent toxin exposure for my family. And we can't know better, or we can't do better unless we know better. And now I'm presenting research that shows correlation of malathion to cancer, so we do know better. So I want to ask the council, will we choose to do better? And I do have research as well, and I'm happy to email links if you guys like it.
Sure. I agree. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, yes, please, before while we shuffle the papers.
Okay. Good day, Council. Hi. My name's Jenny Ealy, and I live in Goddard. I live at 1809 North McCray Drive. And I just wanted to echo Taylor's sentiment. Since 2020, as I'm sure many of us have, we've gone down different rabbit holes. And I wouldn't title myself an environmentalist, or a health nut, or anything like that. But I've been very conscientious about the things that I'm putting into my, bringing into my home and into my family. And I choose with my dollars what I'm buying at the store. So if I decide to purchase organic, I know it's going to be a little bit more expensive. And there are things, yes, my husband loves McDonald's, so we eat McDonald's when he decides that that's what he wants for dinner. So I'm making a choice occasionally, right? And that's our choice to make with our dollars. I don't have that ability with city funds. And so I, to echo what Taylor said, I would just ask you to really put some thought into the research that was provided. There are 17 pages of the risks of this malathion and what can come of it. It's a lot to read, especially for somebody who doesn't have a science background. It's a lot of big words. But again, I can spend my money at the grocery store to buy things that I think are important for my family. I can try to limit exposure as much as possible, but I can't control that the city is spraying this stuff two times a week and that my family is outdoors during the summertime when it's being sprayed. And I know you minimize the risk by trying to do it at night, but it's cooler in the evening. So our family's outside until nine or 10 o'clock at night sometimes. So I just would ask that you please consider this research and consider making an agenda item, if not tonight, at a future meeting where this could be discussed further. Thank you so much for your time. And I only made one copy since it's so long, but I'll hand it up here.
All right.
Thanks, Steve.
Hi there. My name's Colleen Casanova. I've been a Goddard resident for 32 years. I live over on 300 Brazos Drive. George knows me. We've talked about this before, and I'm just echoing what the two previous ladies talked about. Two Thursdays ago, my husband and I were hosting a dinner party at 9:00. Well, we were eating still at 9:00 at night on the back deck. Had food out, drinks out, windows were open, beautiful evening, and they came by at 9:10, fumigating. So we all ran in, shut the windows, stayed inside for 30 minutes because that's what we're supposed to do, went back out, and went by again at 10:35. That's what got this all stirred up, because you know, we've been talking about it all summer. So where I'm coming from, I hear what Taylor's saying and what the other gal is saying, but I'm a huge gardener. We now have the community garden. We have a pollinator garden that the Girl Scouts have put in. We're trying to attract bees and butterflies to get our vegetables and things to grow. This malathion does not just target mosquitoes, as they've told me in previous years after I finally did the research on it. It targets all insects. It goes to their nervous system, and it kills them. Bees, butterflies, and all insects, pretty much. It also contaminates the waterways. So if you have a food bowl out for your dog, your cat, or we even have little bowls out in the pollinator garden for the bees, then that water is contaminated. So again, I hope you just think a little bit more about this. If somebody wants to fumigate their yard, let them fumigate their yard, or put protective clothing on, or put a lotion on them to go outside. But like Taylor also said, you don't have a lot of disease or viruses going around because of insects. It's been so dry, they have nothing to reproduce in. It would be a different story if we were having tons of rain and, you know, we had a huge outbreak of mosquitoes for malaria, but we don't. So that's all I really wanted to say. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Anyone else this evening? If not, we'll go ahead and close citizen comments for this evening. Move on to the ex parte conflict of interest declaration. At this time, I would like to give my two fellow council members a chance to declare the conflicts of communication that they've had that might influence their ability to consider any of tonight's agenda items impartially. No? No? I'll say no, too. We'll move on to the next item. Appointments, arguments, and recriminations.
Honorable City Council, Mayor Lee, I have the distinct pleasure to present this item, recognizing one of our longtime contributors to our community, someone who has given a huge portion of their life to serving here in Goddard, David A. Curtis. Mr. Lee, if you want to take it away with this proclamation.
It's a little long here, so David, hang in there with me while I read this part, okay? Whereas the City of Goddard is proud to recognize those who have made extraordinary contributions to the growth, development, and spirit of our community. And whereas David A. Curtis has served the Goddard community with unparalleled dedication for over 45 years as a member of the Goddard Lions Club, embodying the true spirit of service and selflessness. And whereas David A. Curtis, along with his wife Phyllis, led the Goddard Senior Group for many years pre-COVID, fostering a welcoming and supportive environment for older adults and contributing to the enrichment of their lives and well-being. And whereas David A. Curtis was instrumental in creating the original Goddard Community Garden, a space that has not only provided nourishment, but fostered community connections, collaboration, and growth. Whereas throughout his 45 years of community service, David A. Curtis has inspired countless individuals in Goddard to serve, and still today continues to inspire the next generation of volunteers and service-minded community leaders to lead and continue the good in our community through the Goddard Lions Club. The new and improved David A. Curtis Goddard Community Garden, that almost gets to be a tongue twister, and opening of the Goddard Senior Center, just to name a few items. Whereas our community would not be what it is today without the dedication and selfless contributions of individuals like David A. Curtis, who have made a lasting positive impact in our town. And whereas on October 28th, 2024, David A. Curtis will be celebrating his 88th birthday, marking not only a milestone in his life, but an opportunity for our community to reflect on the enduring legacy he has built and continues to build for future generations. And now, therefore I, George W. Lee, Mayor of Goddard, Kansas, hereby proclaim October 28th and each October 28th going forward as David A. Curtis Day in the City of Goddard, and encourage all citizens to join in celebrating and honoring David A. Curtis for his dedicating decades of service, dedication, and profound and lasting influence to our community. And witness, I hereto set my signature and cause the seal of the City of Goddard to be affixed this 21st day of October 2024. David, congratulations.
We have lived in this town, we moved here at 65, and lived in the same house, there she was, basically 60 here, and I'm 88. It's been home. It's been fun, but fun is kind of getting down in the back, per se.
Well, congratulations.
Everybody, I appreciate it. I appreciate the city. When I was on the council back in the 70s, we had things going on the same as we got today. Same issues. Everything's got a little higher. It's really growing. It kind of scared me with all the construction going on here at one time. If we just get some food service in town.
David, congratulations. We're working on that food service. There are a lot of things right here. Yes, my picture?
Yes, we do.
I want to again thank you, everybody.
Glad to thank you, David.
Relax, thank you.
Derek's side group behind you.
You guys are all exercise people.
Every time, every time we relax for 10 seconds, I think we do say, and it's not long enough to relax.
Congratulations. And to officially wrap this up, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to proclaim October 28th as David A. Curtis Day. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Before I get out the door, I'm going to run down there and see Russell. No, just teasing. It's official now. Okay, consent agenda, before I see the motion. In relation to the consent agenda, there's item G3, step three of series 2024-5, sales results. It's in the consent agenda. I was asked to share a quick note from City Financial Advisor, Brett Shogren. He's here, I think, right in the front row. We received four bids on the notes this morning, and the best bid was from Piper Sandler at DIC, and that rate was 3.423520. It's kind of like a fun number percent. There's a 1% escalating factor. The rate is coming in lower than expected, and we'll be able to downsize the issue to 4 million, similar to 5,000. And there should, we should have about $50,000 project contingency after all the costs are paid. So that's just a little quick note for the item of consent agenda. If that I didn't entertain a motion to approve a consent agenda.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I approve the motion. Seconds. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. A little quiet up here with just three of us. CFO, Brooke Carroll, good evening.
Hi, Council. For you, you have the 2024 third quarter financial report. I just wanted to express that this report was put together to, I worked this to really try to make it transparent, easy to read. It's a little different than you've seen it in the past. And I just want to express that if you ever want to change anything, you want to see it a different way, you hear on the streets, "I hate the way that she's doing it," please let me know, because I'm working really hard to make these financials easy to understand for everybody, not only you, but the citizens that read these, so we can, we can work together more effectively. So. So today for the third quarter agenda, we will go through these items. We will do a general fund overview. We will talk about the special revenue and enterprise funds. We will then talk about the capital improvement and reserve funds. I'll give you a treasury update. The third quarter treasury report is completed, and then we'll talk about this kind of what we're doing in the finance department behind the scenes. So again, I've kind of already mentioned this. My objective is to be completely transparent with our financial operations, so taxpayers know how our money is being spent. So to get, to get right down to it, when we go to this slide and it's in your packet, this is our, this is our general fund revenue update. And you can see that I have presented this in, in basically two types of categories. You will have our tax revenues, and then you will see kind of the other revenues that we've received into the general fund. And so as, as the spreadsheet shows, you'll see quarter one, two, and three, and then the quarter three year-to-date amounts, which shows where we are today in each one of those categories. I've compared those dollar amounts to the total amount received, and you can kind of see which, which one of those categories is our largest driver. And then I want to compare those numbers to our budgeted numbers, just to make sure that we are where we want to be, where we projected last year when we made our budget. So if you look at the quarter three progress, you can see where we are percentage-wise. And I want to make sure at this point in time, we are at 75% and above, and we are, we are pretty much there right now. Franchise taxes are kind of lagging just, just a little bit, but not really. I have a feeling that we're going to make that up in, in quarter four. If you look at the green column there, you will see that quarter three of 2023, this shows where we were at this point in time last year. So I'd like to compare those two numbers just to kind of see if there's any sort of outlier, or if there's anything that we should note. I've also included in here in the pink category is what we kind of predict for quarter four to come in and kind of make sure that we're going to meet our targets at year end. It should also be noted that our miscellaneous revenue column that you see there is primarily made up of just some firework receipts, merchant fees, refunds, licenses, rentals, donations. And a lot of times, these funds are offset by expenditure accounts on the other side of the picture. These top five revenue sources for the general fund include interest, sales tax, property taxes, franchise taxes, and comp use taxes. And I want to note that building permits would be our next category, thanks to Mike and his team over there, doing a good job in that department. They would be next if, if one of these four or five would drop off. But I just wanted to present to you here the top five revenue sources. Now, if we look at the other side of the picture, these are our expenses. And again, kind of the same, same story as I walked you through on the revenues, and this will be consistent throughout. So for one, two, and three year-to-date, quarter three, where we are compared to the budget and where we were compared to the budget last year, and then our, our projections. So we want to make sure that when we're looking at our general fund balances, that we're remaining within our budget authority. It would be great if we were at 75% again or less in each one of these categories. You have a question?
Yeah.
Okay. But one of the things that I want to, I want to show on this is this how we break out the categories. So you will see that we break our general fund out into these specific categories, general, law enforcement, recreation, and culture, community, and, oh wait, sorry, community and economic development. And then we have that capital outlay discretionary line item down there, too. So when you make, when you take up all of those funds, or all of those categories within the fund, at the end of the day, we want to make sure that we're under 75%. And we are, when you put all of those things together. We anticipate some of those inner funds, inner departments within the funds to be high and low in different aspects. That's pretty, pretty common. I also want to explain that in the revenues and the expenses you're seeing, those are net of any transfers in and transfers out. I've separated those out at the bottoms of each of these slides. I didn't want that to be confusing, since those are ins and outs, and can be confusing from time to time. Our top five expenditure categories for quarter three are code enforcement, planning and zoning, the pool, court and police, administration. And it should be noted, you know, the pool's pretty expensive. It's bringing in two meals right there. So our total revenue for pools was $47,000. So, you know, I just kind of want to, I kind of want to mention that. But all, all of these other categories are really pretty standard. So if we move on, we don't dwell too long on the general fund. We have a bunch of other funds that are very important, too. We have the special revenue and enterprise funds. And I just wanted to include this slide in here and to say real quickly what these, what these are made up of, and how they're funded, and where the revenue's coming from. So you, in our special highway, it's, it's for, it's for streets, and it's primarily financed through the gasoline tax that we receive. We have our debt service fund, which is funded through mill levy and new issuances and transfers. The library uses mill levy and assembly pass-through. We have our special parks and recreation, and that's generally just a transfer in from the general fund. We have our tourism promotion fund that is funded through the transient guest tax. And then we have our special sales tax through the CID Tananica, which is also a pass-through. Then down below, we have our enterprise funds, which is our business-type funds, and we have water, wastewater, and we now have a stormwater utility. You won't see a whole lot of excitement in that fund right now. It just got started. In fact, it only has $800 in there right now. Might have one more today, but as of June, as of September 30th. So this is the performance of these funds through quarter three. I think everything looks like it's performing where we want it to be, where we expected it to be through quarter three, and right in line with quarter three of this time last year. I think that all looks pretty good. I wanted to show you, especially down on the bottom half where we show our enterprise funds. I broke that out so you could kind of see customer sales, tap fees, and miscellaneous, where those revenues are coming from in those categories. A good portion of that miscellaneous revenue is coming from interest income that we have earned, and that will be highlighted again on one of the later slides. Expenditures for the special revenue and enterprise funds, again, just checking these out, wanting to make sure that we are setting at 75% and below for quarter four. I did go ahead and maxed out a lot of those on the quarter four forecast, because we're going, we're probably going to hit those pretty closely. We'll have to monitor them very closely at the, at the last few months of the year, just to make sure that we're not going over in budget authority in any of those funds, and that we're still able to make transfers at year end. and that we're still able to make transfers at year end. I'm working with, I will be working with the department heads to make sure that those funds that they're responsible for are staying where they need to be. This slide here, and I have to apologize for the people that are online. This slide looks different than what they're seeing. I had to make an edit to this before, before we got started here today. But I like to do just a real quick performance on the enterprise funds, just to kind of do some metrics to see where we are year-to-date. So the first, if we look at the utility fund and we, we start, we kind of want to look and see how it's performing, I, I like to look at the operating ratio. And that's where you take your total operating revenues and compare it to your total operating expenses. And when you compare those two numbers, you want to have at least 80% remaining in that, in that metric. And right now, we're setting at 71%, which means that that utility is actually looking pretty good. It's covering, it's covering its, its operating expenses with the revenue that it's coming in. Then I like to go just a little bit lower there and I like to kind, I like to compare, I like to look at the net income as a percentage of operating revenue. So after we subtract out all of those operating expenses from our operating revenue, we like to subtract out our capital improvements and any transfers out of that fund to come up with a, with a true net income at that point. At that point, in, in the water fund, we're setting at 0.25%. We like to see at least five or six percent here remaining. This goes to show that if this was to go negative, it would mean we are eating up reserves and we're, we're spending more than we're bringing in. And so anytime we start making capital improvements and we know the water utility fund is needing improvements, we're going to start dipping into those reserves until we're able to catch up with the revenue. Same, same scenario with the sewer utility fund. We do that same, same drill. We, we have our operating revenues. We subtract out our operating expenses. We're setting at 61.4% for operating ratio. And again, like I said, we'd like to see that at at least 80%. So that, operation-wise, we're looking pretty good. It's when we start making our capital improvements, which are needed, and transfers to debt service and other funds that we start getting closer down into getting the reserves. Sewer fund looks better. It's at 4.84%, but like I said, we like to see that at about five or six percent. Water utility will start looking better probably in quarter four because we have changed our rates a little bit. And so the revenue is going to look a little bit better in quarter four. And again, for anybody that's online, this, this is updated at City Hall. So again, apologize. Try to see that way. The next category we'll talk about is our capital improvement and reserve funds. So I like to, to look at these. These are funds that are not budgeted. They're not bound by a budget authority for these, this category. The capital improvement fund balance for quarter three ended it right now at about 12 million, 12.6 million dollars. It should be noted that approximately eight, 85% of this fund balance includes tent note proceeds. So that, that isn't truly money that the city can spend. That is, that's being held there for development projects. And we're going to be working in the future to kind of separate out that so it's clear, maybe makes more sense, it's more transparent, of what's actually available to the city versus what's being held for tent notes. These are our reserve fund balances for the equipment reserve, the wastewater utility, and the water utility over the first three quarters of the year. It, it should be noted that these, these funds are funded through transfers and we also allocate a portion of equity fees to these funds as well. So they will go up if, if they don't go down through expenditures. I have not really, I have not highlighted in the next slide, since it's pretty evident here, wastewater and water are used for water improvements. The equipment fund's a little more, you know, at will. So I wanted to show you all kind of what's happened in the equipment reserve fund because it's a city-wide kind of free-for-all. Things get handled out of there. So you can see through quarter three, the police department has, has spent $257,000 on those types of items for the equipment, out of the equipment reserve fund. And then street operations also use those amounts. So that hopefully explains where, where money's going in, in that reserve, in those reserve funds. Moving on to the treasury update, this is our holdings right now at the different institutions that we have and the balances. You can note that we've earned approximately $705,000 in interest income this year due to the excellent interest rate environment. And, and these are the rates that we, that we're having. This is the quarter three treasures report that will be published in the newspaper pretty much as soon as we're done here today. This is handy to show kind of at a glance all of the funds that we have, the beginning balances, our received expenditures, and our ending fund balances in those accounts when compared to our cash accounts and our bond indebtedness. So I think this is pretty standard. Y'all have seen this probably many times. So. So other business that we're working on behind the scenes, right now, I've been meeting with the auditors to just kind of talk about processes going forward, ways to make improvements. We have a meeting scheduled in January to finish out the year and start planning for our audit. This week, I'm meeting with some banks to talk about interest rates and possibly moving some money around to enhance interest income if, if possible. We've got some money sitting around that may not be doing as well as it could be. And we want to make sure that that's not that way. I've been setting up new funds. So on that treasures report that you saw this time, next time, you will see different funds there because as we get new tent notes in, I am out, I am setting up a new fund that will line item those special projects out individually so you can see where they stand in time as well. And again, those, those funds are going to be pulled out of the capital improvement fund, so they'll no longer be there. And that, that will hopefully be cleaned up over time and we can start seeing that a lot better. 2026 budget prep is starting. I know it's hard to believe, but I have, I have some ideas on how to get that started. So I, I'm going to start prepping that and, and kind of getting the game plan ready. I've already mentioned the capital improvement plan and we're going to start working on the 10-year capital improvement plan. And something on here that I didn't note that you should probably know is we're working really hard to get our, our cloud-based G-Works accounting systems up and running. We've been doing a lot of training in-house, trying to get that ready to go. Everybody's been working really hard. I've pulled their hair out, but we're, we're going to make it. So I just note that. So with that, that's my third quarter financial report. Would you happen to answer any questions?
You know, this looks pretty neat and good.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, that was just what they were saying. That was awesome. That was a lot easier to read. So I appreciate that.
Oh. The Carol thing, right?
Thank you, Bert. Okay, moving right along here. New business item I two. New director, slow talking, like a smug.
Honorable man, City Council. This is I two, lots of amendments and subdivision regulations. With the introduction of duplexes and twonomes, the city limits, cities looking at a way to expedite, improve the lots split requirements that are outlined in the city limits. The city also believes that there may be conflict in interpretation of the city subdivision regulations when reading Article 2.102 and Article 12.122.1 through 12.122.3. The city would like to accomplish several objectives and adoption of disorderments in their outline below as follows. Expedite the process for lots split rules by having the city staff approve lots splits administratively. In determining the conflict between Article two and Article 12, Article two is invoked and shall be considered greater than Article 12, and Article 12 shall be considered supportive to Article two. Any acting agreed by decision, the city staff may appeal before the planning commission. By permission, do approve this amendment on October 14th of 2024. Underbody review and changes in subdivision regulations allows city staff to approve lots splits administratively as well as having Article two supersede Article 12 when conflict arises. Here is my analysis. I'm not going to read it. You guys are welcome to. It's quite a bit. But basically, it goes down through, this is actually like pulled out of the subdivision regulations. Applications, procedures, the big thing would be here under seven. A substandard-sized lot or parcel will be created. This would be says you're not allowed to do this. In the event a lots split is for the purpose of fulfillment of Article 2.102, do you want to detach or any other building separation for purposes of the creation of additional parcel identification numbers for residential units to be sold individually, shall be considered conforming and acceptable. So basically, what we're going to see is a lot more lots splits coming forward. As duplexes are split, we call them twin homes, per our subdivision regulations on Article two. And so they have to have two separate parcel identification numbers. So the twin homes usually have to take it before the planning commission. Well, currently, we, we still have to take it before the planning commission. But we ran into a couple of things. One is that if a developer wants to split a duplex into a twin home and sell them separately and they're going to closing and we've already had a planning commission given, then they can't close on a twin home until they get that approval before the planning commission. And they only meet once a month. So if that window of opportunity is closed, it delays closing and it would be more expeditious if we could do it administratively. Second, this allows us to have greater review of the lot split process, not necessarily because there wasn't as great of a review as before, but now it allows us to sort of put our own seal and stamp on it and then work directly with the county and register deeds for reporting of the lot splits as opposed to having the survey of themselves of them, just work directly with them as opposed to having to have, wait for them and come back before planning commission. It allows us to have a more latitude now to do it. So there is small publication cost for the ordinance. Legally, it was approved as a form. It is recommended to both waive the reading of the ordinance and approve amendments or subdivision regulations on the force plus a roll call. Do you have any questions related to this?
I think this just makes things a little simpler for the experts and for you.
Yeah.
Expedite the process.
It lets us work a little bit more closely with the developers and then the potential future residents of the city who are buying them because they feel that stress and frustration too if they're trying to close on a twin home and they can't because we have to delay them another month.
I'll make a motion that we waive the reading in the ordinance.
Saved it.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion that we approve the amendment to the subdivision regulations.
Saved it.
Two seconds and roll call.
Councilmember Fish?
Yes.
Mayor Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
He won against 979.
979. Thank you very much. This is I three. This is an overlay district introduction to subdivision regulations. So as city grows, possibly imposing additional provisions on the developments has come up. This possibility is also raised in other cities that wish to enforce greater architectural requirements on the area that may have significant historical significance or increased need for specific design features. The city staff has discussed or had discussed this before to determine that perhaps the best approach would have been overlay district. In several zoning cases, the council planning vision has asked different developers to record a district covenant outlining what the additional restrictions will look like for each individual development. Staff determined during a conversation with city attorney and overlay, it should not be the most effective solution to eliminate development with, with certain parameters. It would be beneficial in another context, but a development agreement would be more appropriate for eliminating the development scope. This was conveyed to the planning commission with the recommendation that they deny the changes to the subdivision regulations. The planning commission denied the recommendation of 7-0 on October 14th, 2024. That means they approved the denial that was requested by city council, by, by my subdivision city staff. So just to make that clear. So we're looking at an overlay district as a possibility, but in speaking with Robert Corby Melmore-Slayng, we went back and forth in the application of it. An overlay district in principle is a good idea, but not in how it was drafted. So I'm asking that you guys deny this because once it's published, it still has to come to court even though we're making a recommendation for denial. So city council is considering amendment to subdivision regulation. Planning mission denied the recommendation 7-0 on October 14th. This requires a simple majority. You guys want to veto planning commission and decided to adopt it anyway. So four of five of the city members, since I don't see four out of five, I guess you guys can't see for majority veto. So I guess that forces you to approve it anyway. Staff's recommendation is not overlay district inclusion sets and adopt the most ideal modification of subdivision regulations. Financially, it's qualification data occur, legally approved as a form. It is recommended to both waive the reading of the ordinance and jump to that anyway. And then deny the amendment to subdivision regulation force was a roll call.
Supposedly tape it.
You could send it back to the planning commission and then it'll come back for you and you could do a simple majority to approve it if you wanted to do that. Does that kind of make sense, though? It was a good idea in theory.
So I make a motion to waive the reading ordinance.
There you go.
Start again. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. I make a motion that we deny amendment to subdivision regulations.
Start again. Roll call.
First, yes.
So I'll say this.
Okay.
Councilmember Fish?
Yes.
Mayor Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
No ordinance number because we're not publishing it. This is I four. This is an ordinance establishing a community improvement fee. So as the city grows, as mentioned before, it is desirable to improve the quality of life while simultaneously continue to maintain and provide essential infrastructure. These costs in the rise of time, the cities look for ways of introducing multiple revenue streams to offset those costs without placing too big of a burden on existing residents. So city staff being sensitive to concerns from residents and welfare costs of taxes is introduced, introducing another stream of revenue through the building permit process to cash flow improvements in the city right-of-way and public lands, including but not only to park lands. The fee revenue will support street right-of-way projects and park projects equally. It is believed that fees collected from the buildings will reduce the at-large costs incurred by the city for improvements and maintenance to parks and roadway projects. The fee will be called community improvement fee and shall be collected in time a new residential, personal, or residential building permit is issued for new builds to new construction. Only the fee shall be structured under the analysis section below. It can be amended anytime with a simple resolution to amend the master fee schedule. If the city council would like to introduce community improvement fee, an ordinance will have to be adopted. The following agenda item I five will have the introduction resolution to amend the master fee schedule if approved. So city council is willing to possibly introduce a community improvement fee as outlined here. Single-family detached, we would charge an additional $1,000 for the building permit. For two-family, which duplexes and twin homes, it'd be $2,000 on top of the additional fees that we're currently collecting. Multifamily, three units are graded as the final subdivision regulations to be 12 cents per square foot for the gross square footage of principal buildings, so no accessory buildings, or if it's multiple buildings, we'd have to kind of collectively engage with the gross square footages. Industrial would be 6 cents and then commercial would be 12 cents again. There'd be a small publication cost for the ordinance. Generally, fees are tied to the specific services the city provides to a party paying the fee. This is defined by Robert Corby Melmore-Slayng. Well, we are asking you both waive the reading of the ordinance and approve the adoption of the ordinance establishing community improvement fee for voiceless roll call. So at this point, I'll open up to questions, comments?
Mayor, with respect to our city attorney here and his authority, I just want to allow, if the bench would, he an opportunity to further elaborate on the legal opinion. If he so chooses. I don't really have any other comments beyond what, what Bob has expressed. I mean, this is a fee that other communities in the area have assessed. Challenge to that and so.
I know, Mike, you had mentioned, I mean, in terms of the other cities, some different amounts of it.
Yeah, we took this, typically, we try to do an amendment to the master fee. So we look at other cities, like pure cities, but all cities and, and, you know, and just try to make a determination this is considered a reasonable expense for the services that are being provided. So other cities have adopted this and I can't name all of my heads, but.
It's not uncommon, I guess.
We're not the first up the gate, for sure. Most cities have already adopted it.
This is, this is also an answer to our citizens' call to be defraying more of the expense of keeping up our infrastructure to the folks who are helping accelerate the growth of our community, which would of course be the developers. So we're going to be splitting this fee into two streams. Basically, it'll be parks and street, which again is typical in these other communities that we saw that are doing this. With a huge street initiative that we just kicked off this year and a probable Capitol Park project next year that's going to require some debt issuance, it creates a wonderful opportunity to adopt this additional revenue stream to help support those projects and owners.
I just want to tack on at the end, just clarification for anybody curious. This also, if I am correct, if we've approved a, a division or building or whatever, but they have not pulled the building permit, this still applies to them.
Yes, correct.
Correct. So a bunch of those duplexes that have already been approved will be giving that tack on.
Yes. So if the building permit has already been pulled, it will not apply. But the building permit has not been pulled, it will apply.
There's a lot of votes if I understand correctly.
More than one.
They will take it.
Any else?
I make a motion to waive the reading of the ordinance.
Next motion, waive the reading. Two seconds. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye. I make a motion that we approve the adoption of the ordinance establishing community improvement fee.
I'll second that. Roll call.
Councilmember Fish?
Yes.
Mayor Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
The ordinance nine eighty.
Nine eighty, thank you very much. This is I four, this is a resolution to amend the master fee schedule to include the community improvement fees. So after November seventeenth, twenty fourteen, city council made the city council adopt the resolution establishing a consolidated master fee schedule to assist city staff and the public in quickly locating the appropriate fees. From time to time, these fees should be amended to more accurately reflect costs associated with the services and infrastructure provided by the city. City staff are asking to amend the master fee schedule to offset the costs associated with growth and development. This is in relation to quality of life by introducing revenue streams to have modified span, parks, and public spaces, including modifications to the city right-of-way. City council is considering approving a resolution to amend the master fee schedule changing the list of the local listings, including exhibit one point five A. So once again, this is kind of what you guys looked at in I four. Financially, legally, it's approved as a form by Robert Corcoran of Morris Lane. That would be the resolution that's been approved by Robert Corcoran of Morris Lane. It is recommended the city council adopt the resolution for amending the master fee schedule to include changes listed in exhibit A of the resolution, simple of all votes. So we do this anytime where we're including a new fee. Now, like when we adopt ordinances, we could just add a resolution to change the fees related to those ordinances as opposed to adopting new ordinance every single time.
This is kind of part of me to relax.
Correct, yeah. And you'll see this, we'll bring it up time to time again, and time when one adjusts these.
Okay.
Make a motion to adopt the resolution for amending the master fee schedule to include the changes listed in exhibit A of the resolution.
I'll second that. Keep making this motion. My second, almost a fairer say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good evening. Before you this evening, we are, myself and Randy are going to make a brief presentation to you. This is just to provide an update on what the ad hoc water committee has been up to. Just wanted to let you know, so we had our first meeting in August and then one in September, so we've had two meetings thus far. The water committee is meeting on, normally on the fourth Monday of every month here in this room at seven P M. These meetings are, of course, open to the public. The agenda, as well as the associated meeting summary, are published on the city's website. And this is a brief recap. In the two meetings that we've had thus far, we've had a discussion, a book discussion from Ways to Clear Your Community, Ten Ways to Clear Your Community book. The first chapter in that book is all about water. And so the committee read that chapter and then had a really positive discussion on the importance of both water quality and quantity, as well as other discussions about where we are in terms of our water utility, our water infrastructure here in Goddard. We have also talked about in our meetings the water conservation and drought emergency planning. That is going to be two ordinances that will be brought before this, before the governing body later this year to amend those and make sure that we are in compliance with state regulations, as well as making sure that we're being good stewards of our water utility fund and the available water resources that we have. This month, during the month of October, we'll be going on a public works tour that will take place next Monday, so we're going to meet out front here at city hall, hop in a big fifteen passenger van, and Brett Brandon-Burden will lead us on a tour for the committee of our public works infrastructure with a focus on water. Committee will not be meeting in December, but will meet during the months of January through April of next year, twenty twenty-five. And most of those, most of those committee meetings will focus on inviting selected guest speakers, experts in the water industry, both in Kansas and the engineering in general, to make some presentations as well, with the final committee meeting being in April. So again, we want to keep this brief this evening, and I'm going to turn it over to our committee chairperson, Randy Raynard, for him to share a few remarks as well. And then both Randy and I are happy to answer any questions that the council may have regarding where we are with the water committee. Thank you.
Well, good evening. As Ryan said, we've had two meetings, and some of the things that we've been doing is looking at what are the citizen concerns, the community concerns. At the top of that list is water quality. The second thing is how much it costs us, the bills. The third was availability, because we've been told several times we're kind of at the edge of using the water we can get. And then fourth thing, and this was expressed by several people, was the fact that some people are being forced to use water for things that they might not otherwise use them for. So things that we've discussed, as Ryan said, we talked about the how to rule the community. We've looked pretty closely at the historical water usage, thanks to the information that was provided to us. We've looked at the current status of the system, where we are with respect to what's available, how we're getting it, how much it's costing us to maintain that. And we're looking at some of the short-term mitigation for trying to reduce the costs and reduce the usage, and that will come up in those ordinances that were mentioned. I will say that the committee was unanimously in favor of those ordinances as they were presented to us. Some of our goals moving forward is to further understand the current system and the current needs, and then also potential future needs, as well as how we would reach some of those. We want to try to get some resolution to citizen concerns, and that doesn't mean that we're going to be able to fix the citizen concerns, but maybe help them to understand why we're, why things that need to be done really do need to be done. We're going to try to come up with, and this is a long-term goal for the, for the end goal, and that is an improvement roadmap. What do we have to do to improve our water quality, keep the bills reasonable, and also allow for some expansion? And then ultimately, among the recommendations that we'll come up with is some ways of keeping costs under control, or at least making it so that people understand why we're having to spend the kind of money we're having to spend to get these things done. Questions, comments, concerns?
Appreciate your leadership and working with that group, and I just would say, press on.
It's been my pleasure. It's been interesting.
Well, we really do appreciate the contributions of that whole group as we're working on that issue.
It's a good team. We've had some spirited discussions, but we're pretty much all of the same mind, so it's pretty interesting.
Enjoy that tour on Monday, Monday, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, enjoy that.
Really looking forward to looking at some books.
Special glass of water?
Say aye.
One of those special glasses of water?
Oh, yeah, we got the special glass.
Okay, moving along to item I seven.
Honorable mayor of city council, item I seven, real estate purchase. This one came in early Friday. We're able to tack it on to the end of the agenda before we send the pack it out. We've talked about this a little bit during strategic workshopping and some other informal conversations, but one of the things that I've learned from mentors in growing communities is that when you're able to identify remnants of property in specific locations, and you happen to be serving in a growing community, it might be wise to start collecting some of those properties so we have the opportunity to put things that we need on ground that we already own instead of having to go after it later on when it's worth more. It always becomes worth more when you have an immediate need, of course. So we were able to find approximately one point acres of property for future water utility infrastructure. Generally speaking, we, we feel like that could be a future intended use. The area, as you'll see on the map, this is the retirement community. You can see right here our current storage tank and our water tower. Obviously, this piece right here would be of value to us. One of the big things that our team has been working on is the contract with professional engineering consultants to do the water pressure model. We think the preliminary ideas that are coming out of that, which of course will be presented to the ad hoc water committee, will indicate there's some additional storage needs for us, maybe something similar to the big above-ground tank that we have next to the tower currently. That's speculation at this point, but the, the work that P E C is doing will provide us with some project concepts, some estimating, and some other types of helpful information. And again, that'll be ran through the ad hoc water committee, then to city council. So that's one section of our ten-year capital improvement program that should continue to be referenced. The water section's obviously very important to us. So the opportunity to acquire this land could open up some, you know, obviously some space for us in our water utility as we grow into the future. So I can see the financials there. Legal team has put together most of this pair to work, and they've approved it as to form. At this point, staff would recommend that the council authorize the mayor to execute the documents, and then we will work towards getting it closed or splitting the costs with the seller. So any question you might have, I'd be glad to answer.
I'm just, I'm curious. Go back to that picture of the mound. What's that big empty lane next to it? Is that the same owner?
It is the same owner. However, we are able to come to terms on the property highlighted there.
All right. All right. Worth a shot.
Any else?
Yeah.
If you want to flip it back?
Sure.
I'll make a motion that the mayor executes the real estate, the state agreement, and send on exhibit A.
Make this motion. Keep it seconds, almost a fairer say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. City district, your writer voice?
Yes, thank you. So we've got a brief update on our city operations, projects, future agenda items. One thing I'll bring up before we start, I don't believe we'll be able to have a quorum for tomorrow's regularly scheduled city council meeting at noon. I will send out a cancellation this evening before I head home. I don't believe we should meet if we're only going to have two folks available. That topic for discussion is one that we need. I've been trying to get it scheduled for a couple of months now, so I'm hopeful that maybe the Tuesday meeting in November, we can get after that one. I don't want to do it during a seven o'clock meeting when we have lots of other business, so just make a mental note not to come here at noon tomorrow. We're going to cancel. Water reuse, Kansas charter. This is a new item to bring with, up to the ad hoc water committee, but it's, it's just a very recent development. The city of Goddard is happy to announce that it is one of five chartering member cities in Kansas applying to establish a Kansas section or chapter of the National Water Reuse Association. The purpose of the group is to engage member cities and partner agencies in a movement for safe and sustainable water supplies, to promote acceptance and support of recycled water, and to advocate for policies and funding that increase water reuse. The Kansas section's primary objective, as we begin to charter it, is to get the state of Kansas to establish policies governing the establishment of water reuse facilities. So a little more elaboration on that. Essentially, there are other states in the country where there are programs and policies set up by their state departments of health that allows the treated sewer effluent water to be repurposed as domestic water supply for the community. I believe they affectionately refer to those as the toilet bill. I would just, I know that sounds a little tongue-in-cheek. Seventy years ago, a community in southeast Kansas was able to do this. The technology's only improved since then. Their community had gone through a severe drought, no water supply, and a group of intellectual peoples that would come together, and for a number of years, they were able to reuse treated water. As it becomes a more finite resource, we need to be looking into these opportunities. So I think that we will see some movement at the legislative level, especially as we get this new association started. There's lobbying capabilities and the like, and so our goal, again, is to get the state of Kansas to put policies on the books that would create a path forward to this type of technology. So a couple of other items here. Purchasing authority. We are just wrapping up some peer city analysis and best practice research in determining a request for increase on the expenditure authority. This is all about trying to be easier to do business with as a city hall. There's lots of times where we're unnecessarily delaying projects or other needs, service provision, because our expenditure authority is a little too low, in our opinion. So we're going to be coming to you guys about that, and of course, it's your prerogatives to whether you'd like to consider increasing it. Inflation is a driving factor there. The Linear Park Playground Edition. The pre-construction conference was held last Friday. Around November sixteenth, we estimate the playground equipment would be shipped. The tree irrigation relocation will begin in the coming days. Dirt work will follow immediately thereafter. The playground equipment would be installed by end of year. Takes them about a week and a half. And then the porters place surfacing is going to be a weather permitting item, but at any rate, the latest date that we anticipate this project to be completed would be in May. I would be excited if we could get it done a little bit quicker than that, of course. Linear Park Lighting, I don't know if anyone has had the opportunity to go check that out, maybe you could this evening, but we now have lighting on the Prairie Sunset Trail on the west side of Main Street there in Linear Park. It's super exciting. There's two lights there that we'll have to come back and take care of in the spring. We're not sure the history, but there was some pretty significant demolition probably a hundred-plus years ago, and back then, folks would just bury it where they tore it down, and so directional boring through massive chunks of concrete gravel presents a challenge, and to have that excavated privately by subcontractor is going to cost about as much as the total project itself, so.
It'll nice with bricks, too.
It is nice.
It's not just concrete.
From Coffeeville Brick Company, which is kind of neat. Tina Powell has been the, the project lead there. She's working with our public works department under the leadership of Brooke Brandon-Bird to put together a strategy whereas, as time allows throughout the winter, the public work staff are going to clear a path, so in the spring they can come back and finish that out. The one eighty-third Turn Lane Project, that is currently out for bid. The letting date estimated is about mid to end of November. We're hoping to start construction at the beginning of the first quarter. I have a grandiose goal in mind that we're going to have all our 2025 roadway projects done by Fourth of July, so hopefully Harland's not shuttering over there, but he's, he's already working on designing the residential street projects, and of course, we've already advertised the Turn Lane Project. So just a brief update, city council parade of homes. I'm excited to see all five city council people and perhaps their spouses. On Sunday, October twenty-seventh, we are going to tour the new subdivisions from two P M. to five P M. Members of the public are welcome, because we're going to have a majority of the governing body present. No action will occur, strictly. We're going to go look at some of these places that have been authorized to be built in our community. You guys are looking at millions of dollars worth of resources to go towards those projects annually, so make some stuff so we go out and tour them and take a peek at what's being built in our wonderful community. We've got the grant out for the Kansas Water Office. The residential well digging, that's still out there. Folks would like to take advantage of it. I want to thank Randy, Ryan, and the committee, and just applaud the, the hard work that that group is doing. I'm excited for them to go on their tour next week and just continuing to be plugged down important issue that's happening here and really steer the direction that we move forward. Roadway projects, we're very close. They pulled the curb on the final phase of North Frontage Road this morning. All the other 2024 roadway projects are complete. SCADA, the staff will be meeting with professional engineering consultants, I want to say, on Thursday. It's probable that we will have a recommendation to city council for bid award either the first Monday of November or the third Monday council meeting. We are going to be paying for most of that, or some of that, with our remaining American Rescue Plan Act fund balance, which needs to be allocated by the end of the year. We've got to get that paper with whoever we award the low bid to. Fall Fest was a roaring success this year. Special thank you to our wonderful Fall Fest committee, our former president and CEO, Iggy Dunce, of course, leading her last Fall Fest and her role. City staff were out there, and of course, the, the group of unnamed volunteers whose hard work made the event possible. Goddard North Park, we're almost there. I'm so excited for you guys to see the master plan and the phase one schematic design. The ad hoc park planning committee meets next week to finalize that work product. And then on November eighteenth, we anticipate presenting that to the city council. You know, we started this in 2014, and here we are, the ball's rolling. Hopefully, next year, we'll be building something special up there. Upcoming agenda items, the Goddard Apartments Development Agreement and IRV intent resolution, the review of the roadway capital improvement program, which again, tomorrow's city council meeting is canceled, where we were going to be reviewing that. Recodifying the process for street closure, sound waivers, and special event permits, again, trying to make it easier to do business with the city, so we don't have to call us for. Again, trying to make it easier to do business with the city, so we don't have to call for special meetings and stuff when applications come in late. We don't feel like it's necessary for you guys to have to approve the same events and activities that we're doing every single year. Of course, if there, we will report on them in the city administrative report most often prior to when they are going to occur. So if there's questions, or you feel like they need to be discussed as an agenda item, it's always a governing body's prerogative to bring anything up or have it added to the agenda. The SCADA bid award, I mentioned that. We are working on, we actually gathered, I think, all of our bids. We're considering a council room addition to add another office to City Hall. We're kind of squeezing blood out of turn at this point with this building, but we're trying to maximize its use as best we can. We're preparing for additional staff with some of the strategic realignment decisions that we're undergoing at this point, so we'll have a look at that. Pro code compliance. Right now, code enforcement is a shared duty in several hats, and quite frankly, driving down the community, we have some issues and needs to be taken care of, and staff just don't have the capacity to do that. Most communities of our size, and actually communities much smaller than ours, have a full-time person dedicated to nothing but code compliance. We've identified a solution where we can privatize that work. You have a third party who comes in and does that for you on a regular basis. They handle everything. We received a proposal. We wouldn't, if the council were to approve this, we wouldn't start it until next year. There's some other staffing changes going on with retirements, et cetera, that would open up some budgetary authority for this option. And privatizing in this way is actually a lot more affordable than hiring somebody and paying their salary plus benefits. So we'll unpack that a little bit further in future meetings. Single-hollowed trash resolution of intent, that's coming up in the next one to two meetings. I mentioned the North Park items, and real quick, my colleague Brooke Carroll, our chief financial officer, she elucidated to this point a little bit on some of the software things going on here at City Hall, and she was being modest. So I want to thank all of our administrative staff for the headaches that they've been dealing with over the last several weeks. I think they've had to spend more time on the phone with our IT providers, the software providers, the people that deal with the servers, because the software companies have had a really hard time getting their stuff together for us, and that makes the work a lot harder. So I appreciate the work that they've been doing to get that cleaned up. We are continuing to use what I feel like is an outdated and underperforming operating system. We looked at changing a few years ago to what most cities use, and it's a half-million-dollar endeavor. And so just like anything else, we're going to continue to be cost-efficient and give what we can out of what we got. But in a few years, we're going to have to get pretty serious about looking toward a change, because what we are using right now is just not a great product. So with that, I will conclude my talking points. I hope I didn't run too long. If you guys have any questions, ask now, or you know where to find me later.
Any questions? Move on to... Government body comments?
I'll be quick. First of all, Randy, thank you so much for speaking tonight. I absolutely love that we have this committee put together. Obviously, water is a very contentious subject right now for many reasons, and it's something that we can't ignore. And so I appreciate you and your willingness to sit and research, and that tour you guys take will be, it'll be interesting. We got to do it this last year. It's pretty cool. So thank you. Taylor, Jimmy, Colleen, thank you so much for coming tonight. August of last year, we voted on this, and I was against it then, and I'm against it now, and I'm sorry for that. We oversee our backyard with clover to try to get more bees and butterflies, and they don't show up. And I personally think I'm the reason, so I promise we're fighting for you. At least I'm fighting for you, I'm not going to speak on their behalf, but I've had some conversations. So we'll see what we can do in the near future to reduce these issues in the future. That's it.
There are a lot of people that do things behind the scenes. And I was riding down a wall the other day, and I saw some of the paint brush in her hand. Shelby Lomond was over meeting the community garden shed. A nice, what color was it? Beige color, looks really nice. It didn't look like the Tom Sawyer whitewash that was on there before. Nothing against the color of the whitewash, but thank you for taking the time to do that. So many people. Only all the work you've done over there at the garden. It's just neat to see whether it's the garden, the senior center. People in the community are pulling together on a lot of different things, and it's so neat to see and be a part of. So just ask everybody to continue to put their best foot forward, and staff, as I say every once in a while, will press on. I'll take a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second, that? Second, all those bearers say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.